If those who are able to could please rise for a moment of personal reflection and remain standing as we introduce our guest speaker, who will, our guest singer, who will sing our national anthem. If I could ask councillor Wilkinson, if you could remain standing, she will introduce our special guest, who will sing our national anthem for the first time in 2017 at council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm happy to introduce Diana Sharp. She's a resident of Canada North, and she came to my rescue yesterday when I found that due to a snowdam, they examined that the student who was going to sing, was supposed to write yesterday, is now this morning. And Diana is actually her teacher, which has made it a very nice connection. She agreed to three and moved, she was raised in Canada, then returned to the UK to study music, and went on to work as an opera and classical singer for companies and projects in the United Kingdom and in Europe. She returned to Ottawa three years ago and now enjoys teaching a wide range of singers from all ages and musical styles at her studio in Canada. And she will be, I'll be telling you know more about the cultural festival we're going to be doing in Canada for 2017, and she will be one of the singers that will participate in that. She's honoured to sing at City Hall this morning. Diana?
Well, thank you very, very much for that beautiful rendition of our nation's anthem. At this point in the meeting, it is my pleasure to call upon John Brummel to the podium, along with Mr. Brummel's councillor, Shad Cadre, and councillor Scott Moffat, as we present this meeting's Mayor's City Builder Award. John, welcome. We're glad to see your family and friends with you here today, and we'll ask councillors Moffat and Cadre to come forward. Welcome. See ya. Come on over here, John. John has been a outstanding resident of Stittsville for over thirty years. As a reporter and photographer with the Stittsville News, John has animated local news stories and made them more meaningful to residents over the years. And just last week, John retired from the newspaper. His presence in the community, accompanied by his trusty camera, has become legendary, helping to build community spirit and pride throughout Stittsville and the Goulburn area. John has helped with many community efforts over the years, such as the annual Stittsville Appreciation Awards, run by councillor Cadre, or the 4H livestock shows at local fairs. Many residents are proud to have had John feature their family members or friends in the Stittsville newspaper, and when people in the community are able to share local achievements, it brings the community closer together. John is also a great supporter of the Goulburn Skating Club, and was recognised for his community work when he received the Canada Chamber of Commerce Citizen of the Year Award for Goulburn several years ago. In 2013, he received the Senior Citizen of the Year Award, recognising his contributions to the community of Stittsville. John was an active member and president of the Stittsville District Lions Club, and he also played a role in the early days of the Rotary Club of Ottawa-Stittsville, where he remains an honorary member. John was also given the honour of cutting the ribbon to officially open the 2016 Richmond Fair, where he received the Ontario Association of Agricultural Society's Service Diploma. Whether working with local councillors or supporting community life in Stittsville and Goulburn, John has always brought, brings a big smile and cooperative attitude to the table. John is passionate about retaining the Stittsville village identity, and we're fortunate to have such an advocate. These many efforts have made significant contributions to the social, cultural and recreational fabric of Stittsville and our entire city.
These many efforts have made significant contributions to the social, cultural and recreational fabric of Stittsville.
Scott, and Shad, and all members of council, thank you, John, for your leadership. We are gonna miss you, telling us what to do, when to smile, pushing us one place to the other. And the two Johns, the legendary two Johns, the other John Curry, you've got another twenty years in you, I guess, John, before you retire. But it's a real honour. John Brummel is a true gentleman, a true professional, and it's an honour to recognise you and thank you for your many, many decades of service to our community. Congratulations. Come on over here, John, and we'll just get all of us in there.
[laughter]
Smile, John.
My young apprentice.
Good morning, everybody. I always feel funny when they're staring at my back. May 5th, 1963, was quite a turning point in my life. It was the day that I, well, first thing I found out when I come into Ottawa to begin life as a medic in the Air Force at NDMC, that there was no Queen's Way past Carling Avenue. And it took quite a while to make it to Rockliffe. But it was through National Events Medical Centre that I met my wife, an Army medic, and the two of us have gone on to spend almost fifty-two years together. The pride of our life is here today, our daughter Deborah. And Deborah is a nurse, and I hesitate because I'm always impressed and amazed when I say this, she is a nurse at the Royal Ottawa, and she really does a tremendous job, and is so much appreciated by her mother and I. I've had so many great years in this job, and with so many of the people around this room, around this table, so many of the councillors, I thank you for those wonderful memories. Recently, just over a month ago, we were watching, a lot of us were watching a movie called It's a Wonderful Life. Quite honestly, as we all know, life has its ups and its downs, but I can truly say, and I've said this outside this room, I have had a wonderful life. And so much of it is because of so many of you, a lot of the people who've come here today, and to be here as I receive this award. Six-thirty this morning, I was listening to Henry Burris be interviewed on the radio, and he commented about Ottawa as a city, and that as a city, he found it was more of a big community. And that's exactly what Ottawa is. And the part that I have enjoyed all these years is the fact that it is a wonderful community. So to Shad, thank you. Scott, many, many thanks. And Mayor Jim, who I fondly know as Mayor Jim, thank you for the honour, and thank you all. Oh, I forgot to tell you one thing. Coming in on Sunday the 5th, Monday the 6th of May, we had seventeen centimetres of snow. So welcome to Ottawa.
True story.
Thank you.
Just stay here?
No, you go grab a seat.
Thank you.
We have one more. I would now ask Roger Lalonde to come forward. This is a little surprise for Roger. And Steve Katalakis to come forward. We kept this from Roger. It's a little surprise. Come on over here, Roger, and our city manager, Steve Katalakis. Since 1989, Roger Lalonde has been a dedicated employee of the City of Ottawa.
Since 1989, Roger Lalonde has been a dedicated employee of the City of Ottawa.
Many of you recognise him from various city events, city council meetings, special events and ceremonies, always capturing great shots. Roger's first job with the city was taking photos for what was then known as the Planning Department. From there, his job expanded to taking photos for the whole organisation, and his work is truly exceptional.
His work is truly exceptional.
Two thousand and three, Roger has taken about three hundred thousand digital pictures. That's a lot of photos of politicians, let me tell you. I understand that Roger plans to keep himself busy during his retirement with activities like house projects, travelling, physical fitness, to name a few. I know Roger will be deeply missed by his colleagues, not only in public information and media relations, but by all of us in the entire organisation. I think I can speak for all members of council, they very much appreciate it, the long hours that you put in to record, from an historical perspective, activities that have taken place in the city.
I know Roger will be greatly missed in his, by his colleagues, not only in public information and media relations, but by all of us across the entire organisation, and all the members of councils.
Thank you, Roger, for the incredible work you have done for the city throughout your career, and I wish you the very best in your retirement.
I want to take this opportunity to thank you for the incredible work you've done for the city throughout your career, and I wish you, I wish you the very best in your retirement.
Few words, and then we have a small presentation for Roger. Steve?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I was joking with a few staff the other day when we were planning this for Roger, that I'd love to get a hold of his secret stash of photos that he has of all the outtakes of everybody. It must be incredible. One day, they'll be released to the Ottawa Sun, and we'll all be in horror. On a personal note, Roger, the one thing, yeah, Matthew, I see the media so excited, their new best friend. Roger has always been there for us. The one thing I've, you know, I've been to a lot of events too, not as many as the mayor and council, obviously, but Roger's always been there when you wouldn't expect someone to be there to take the photos, and I think that's something that, that we all recognise about him. He's taken over three hundred thousand photos, as the mayor has, has said, but he's really created a time capsule of images that could give anyone a history lesson of the city of Ottawa. It really is, I always joke, I say every time he takes a picture, it's going to go to the archives, and it will. Generations from now will be looking at his photographs, and trying to understand the context of what we were living and what we were doing. He's captured nine terms of council, poor you, four of which were pre, I'm sorry, four of which were pre-amalgamation, five they're post-amalgamation. Thousands of internal, external events, from branch recognition events, visits to the prime, from the Prime Minister, premiers and dignitaries, hundreds of magnificent moments in people's lives, including awards and special recognition, thousands of announcements and ribbon-cutting, marking significant city milestones, hundreds of iconic shots of the city that we love, beautiful shots of the city where we work and play and live. He's also caught our staff, many pictures of our staff hard at work, seeing them every day, every day as they deliver services to our residents. And he's watched as people have grown with our organisation. He's got pictures of people who just started, who were in their twenties, and who now are senior leaders of this organisation, and he's watched that development, and it's captured in photography all the way through. He's worked with thousands of city staff and witnessed firsthand, I think, of some of the most memorable moments our staff and our community and our councils have had, and he's captured them for everyone to enjoy for years to come. So Roger, on behalf of the senior leadership team, on behalf of all the management, the staff of this organisation, you've been part of their lives, but thank you for their profession, your professionalism, commitment and dedication to your art over twenty-seven years. We're really going to miss you. Thank you.
So we would, we'd like to present Roger, this is a, here we are, we'll explain it. Before I ask Roger to say a few words, I just want to point out, in case you can't see it, this is the stylised O for the city logo, and it's composed of a couple dozen of Roger's photos. So thank you to Cathy Bowles and the Protocol Office, and ladies and gentlemen, Roger Lalonde.
Well, there won't be too many words here. Really surprised. I just wanted to thank everybody, this twenty-seven years I've been here, and it's been a great run, and I've enjoyed working with everybody, on council, staff, it's great.
Thank you so much, everyone. It was a great pleasure for me.
Well done. Troy was surprised, man. Thanks, Steve.
Bonjour et bonne année à tous. I'm honoured to deliver my sixth State of the City address. Today, I want to reflect on the progress we have made together over the last year. My 2016 State of the City address focused on collaboration. Last year was an important year in the city of Ottawa. Not only was it filled with planning and preparations for 2017, it was also a year of measured and steady achievement. From balancing our budget and maintaining our tax commitment to residents, 2016 has been a year of rolling up our sleeves and getting things done. Not only have we been busy completing the Confederation Line Tunnel, we're also planning for Stage Two, and we have pushed ourselves beyond the original scope to include the trim extension, a link to the airport, and will undertake an environmental assessment to Canada.
In 2016, we undertook our first trade mission to, oh.
Our first trade mission to India, that led to the announcement of a series of new technological and creative partnerships, with an estimated value of over eighty million dollars in contracts that will benefit Ottawa companies and their Indian counterparts. We also invested eighteen point seven million dollars to repair existing social housing to enhance living conditions for, of our most vulnerable residents. And last fall, the inaugural Mayor's Gala for the Arts raised seventy-five thousand dollars for the Ottawa Art Gallery expansion, and the Arts Court redevelopment project, which opens its doors this year. I'm pleased to announce that the Mayor's Gala for the Arts will be held on a bi-annual basis, and the next event occurring in the spring of 2018. I have every confidence that it will develop into Ottawa's premier gala in support of our local arts community.
I am pleased to announce that Mayor's Gala for the Arts will be held on a bi-annual basis, with the next event occurring in the spring of 2018.
With the conversion of fifty-eight thousand streetlights to LED technology, saving six million dollars annually. We've also have some of the highest-ranked drinking water in the world. We installed eight large solar rooftops on municipal buildings in partnership with Energy Ottawa, reducing greenhouse gas emissions by forty-one thousand metric tonnes over twenty years. Construction also began on the combined sewage, sewage storage tunnel, to protect the environment, prevent floods, and ensure future generations can enjoy swimming, and boating, and fishing in the Ottawa River. And any list of accomplishments would not be complete without mentioning that Ottawa was named by the Mercer 2016 Quality of Living Rankings as the most affordable city in all of Canada and the United States for large cities. Ottawa was also identified as a top technology hub in North America, with strengths in digital media, wireless technology, photonics, defence and cybersecurity, and data analytics. As a city, we have worked hard in 2016, and that enthusiasm has carried into the planning of our country's one-hundred-and-fiftieth birthday.
Twenty seventeen will be extraordinary for our residents and the millions of tourists that will visit Ottawa every year.
Live in our city, people want to visit our city, and people want to invest in our city. Let me take a few moments to remind everyone what we are celebrating. We get to celebrate as a city in 2017 because we live in a great country, one that has served as a beacon of tolerance, generosity and prosperity for generations of Ottawa residents. Events are about more than having fun, they remind us how privileged we are to call Ottawa and Canada our home. It's well-known that Ottawa is on a roll, and that we're making progress on a number of important city-building fronts. From citywide LRT, to the rejuvenated Lansdowne, to our new Ottawa Art Gallery and redeveloped Arts Court, to the recently opened Innovation Centre. This progress, in large part, stems from the collaborative efforts we have seen from all tiers of government investing in Ottawa, and from the vitality of our local business and community organisations doing the same. Ottawa is a growing and thriving city.
Ottawa is growing and a thriving city.
Are confidently putting more of their dollars in our city, and the proof of that is all around us, from Bayshore, to the Rito Centre, Shopper's City East, to Tanger Mall in Canada, growth in Barhaven, Stittsville, Orleans, and Riverside South. Ottawa is expected to be home to over one million people in 2019, just over two years from now. By 2036, our city's population will reach more than one point two million residents. I hear firsthand from visitors and residents alike how much they love visiting and living in our city. Just a few months ago, Money Sense magazine ranked Ottawa as the best place to live in Canada. In the same survey, Ottawa was also ranked the best place for new Canadians. Ottawa is also at the top of the list for sustainable cities, cycle-friendly cities, and were ranked the most business-friendly amongst large cities with the most stable employment in all of Canada. Our employment hotspots contain plenty of good-paying government, high-tech and service jobs. And even though we have a large public service sector anchoring our local labour market, we're also fortunate that over seventeen hundred technology companies call Ottawa home. So why am I talking today and taking time to brag about our city? Because 2017 will be a year to celebrate Ottawa. Earlier this month, The New York Times described Canada as the number-one country to visit in 2017, and a feature, and had a feature article about the wonderful places to see and things to do during a weekend spent in Ottawa. Lonely Planet was awarded Canada, awarded Canada the same title last October, and WestJet named Ottawa the number-one place to visit in the world in 2017. Some will remember 2017 as a year of celebrations marked by great events. 2017 is also an opportunity to reimagine Ottawa, to see how we have changed, and to demonstrate how much Ottawa has to offer.
Twenty seventeen is also an opportunity to reimagine Ottawa.
At to over ten million visitors over the next twelve months. It is the way in which we deliver service to residents and visitors alike that makes our city truly great. Some of you may think that being a good host is a modest goal for 2017, but let me remind you that it's a big deal for Ottawa.
Hospitality and tourism spending contributed approximately one point six billion dollars to our local economy.
Sector, which are the bulk of Ottawa tourism businesses, employs over thirty-five thousand local residents. It's really going to be an unforgettable year here in the national capital region. From the Skate Canada Championships last weekend, to the Davis Cup next month, to the Junos and the Grey Cup, it will be a very busy year for residents and visitors alike.
Ottawa is very proud of our professional sports franchises and their contribution to the vibrancy of our city.
Baseball club, when they won the Can-Am League Championship in 2016, and we look forward to hosting the 2017 Can-Am League All-Star Game right here at RCGT Park on July 25th. We also celebrate it with our Ottawa Red Blacks Football Club, when they won the Grey Cup in 2016, the first ever Grey Cup win in Ottawa in forty years, and we look forward to hosting the Grey Cup right here at TD Place on November 26th. Our Ottawa Senators continue to be strong competitors, and we feel optimistic about their chances of making the postseason playoffs this year. And of course, Ottawa loves soccer, and the Ottawa Fury will be starting their 2017 season off in a new league, the United Soccer League. I'd invite all of you and your constituents and people watching this at home, to check out the full list of events at Ottawa2017.ca. We'll be hosting more conventions in Ottawa than ever before, doubling the number of business travellers to Ottawa next year. Ottawa Tourism estimates that well over fifty-eight thousand convention delegates will visit Ottawa in 2017, and this sets a record for Ottawa, and it's a forty-eight percent increase over last year. Today, I want to highlight how Ottawa companies and Ottawa talent are helping to make 2017 a reality.
I want to highlight how Ottawa companies and Ottawa talent are helping to make 2017 a reality.
Inspiration Village, as an example. This installation of about forty sea containers will be located in the Byward Market and will feature talent from across Canada. Dymec Engineering of Greeley and councillor DeRouze's ward has been tasked with the design and build of this impressive construction that will be viewed by millions of visitors this summer. Other events are first for Ottawa, but they will become permanent members of our events community, or make their way, make their way back every few years, such as Red Bull Crash Dice.
This is part of the legacy of Ottawa 2017.
Legacy lies in our ability to develop and celebrate our local talent. Another way we have of celebrating local talent and exceptional contributions to the city is our city's highest honour, the Key to the City. I'm proud to announce that Algonquin College will be receiving this tribute in celebration of its fiftieth anniversary, and Carleton University will be receiving this honour to mark the seventy-five years of education excellence in Ottawa. And accepting these awards of these fine institutions will be their respective presidents, Cheryl Jensen and Roseanne O'Reilly-Runtay. Also this year, the key, the city will be presenting a key to the city to Michel Picard, an amateur and chef d'entente.
A well-respected broadcaster, long-serving news anchor of, on Radio Canada, and current host of Unique FM.
A Canadian senator, former judge, First Nations lawyer, and was the Chair of the Indian Residential Schools Truth and Reconciliation Commission. Sheila Fraser, former Auditor General of Canada from 2001 to 2011, and the first woman to hold this post. Henry Burris, the recently-retired Canadian football quarterback for the Ottawa Red Blacks of the CFL, he won three Grey Cup Championships. And Steve Iserman, a native of Napier and a retired professional hockey player and current general manager of the Tampa Bay Lightning. He is widely considered to be one of the greatest players of all time. I also want to reflect on an idea which could make 2017 even more fun for future generations. I'm announcing that we will work with the Ottawa Archives to create a 2017 time capsule that will be housed here at City Hall, to be opened by residents of Ottawa and council of the day in fifty years' time, when Canada will be celebrating its two-hundredth anniversary. I'm sorry to advise that I probably won't be able to attend this event in 2067.
Thanks to this time capsule, we will offer the future generation an idea of our city.
Communities to propose a representative memento for inclusion in the 2017 time capsule, something that captures the essence of each of our city's diverse wards. Although events are great economic generators, 2017 will be a year of legacy for the nation's capital, with many new facilities and projects that will open to the public this year. Here is a partial overview, and I stress the word partial because so much is taking place in our city this year, of how Ottawa will change for the better in 2017, including public and private partners. The National Arts Centre redevelopment will transform this artistic centrepiece. George Street Plaza will see improvements to the public spaces and pedestrian experience. The Stanley Cup Monument will be unveiled on Spark Street. The new Ottawa Art Gallery will open boasting three times the space of the previous facility, and the Arts Court redevelopment will be revitalised as the centrepiece of the new cultural precinct. The renovated Canadian Science and Technology Museum will reopen in the east. The Innovation Centre at Bayview Yards will open officially and serve as an incubation of innovation later this spring. And the new Currency Museum, which will be called the Bank of Canada Museum, will open And the new Currency Museum, which will be called the Bank of Canada Museum, will open in July of this year. Many of these new or newly renovated facilities will become landmarks in Ottawa. They'll become places that tourists have to visit, and they're all great examples of what can be achieved when we work together. Que pouvons-nous faire chacun d'entre nous pour
What can we do to play a role in this important celebration in 2017?
...to play, from individual residents and families, businesses, first responders, or transit operators, each and every member of our community can be part of the 2017 welcoming team. Have you ever been to a foreign city, for instance, struggling to find a street or a building? We all need to be more than tourism ambassadors this year, and in the years to come, we need to communicate our city's values to everyone we meet. Our warmth and approach will communicate those values. Many visitors will want to see Parliament Hill, stop at the Museum of Nature, drop in at Lansdowne Park, or skate on the historic World Heritage Site, the Rideau Canal. But they also want to experience Ottawa's hospitalities. Visitors may enjoy a pint at a local microbrew pub, a trip to a rural village, or a meal at one of Ottawa's new and exciting restaurants like Bar Laurel in Kitchi Sippi or Riviera just around the corner on Spark Street. These are hidden gems, there are rather hidden gems in every corner of Ottawa, including Martha's Culinaire in Orleans or the Three Sisters Bake Shop in Canterbury. Deux-mille-dix-sept est l'occasion parfaite de
Twenty seventeen is an opportunity to show the world that Ottawa is a fantastic place to live, to work, to learn, to play, to raise a family.
Twenty seventeen is the start of a new page for tourism in Ottawa's history, and that's why we're planning for the future. We're partnering with Ottawa Tourism on our Bid More, Win More, Host More strategy to attract more major sporting and cultural events to Ottawa. I want to take this opportunity to thank members of council and in particular Sports Commissioner Jody Middick for supporting Ottawa's bid to host the 2021 Canada Summer Games. This great community-building multi-sport event, the largest in Canada, would bring twenty thousand visitors to Ottawa and generate approximately 165 million dollars in economic activity, not to mention a legacy for our next generation of athletes, as well as for our sports facilities in all parts of the city. And on a smaller but no less important scale, in 2018, we will be celebrating the Village of Richmond's two-hundredth anniversary with the help of councillor Scott Moffat. City employees, of course, are also the face of the city, and I challenge everyone to remember what we do best as a team: we put residents and visitors first. Je sais que tous les événements de deux-mille-
I know that events of 2017 will require you to do more, to work longer hours.
All our employees under the leadership of Steve Cantalacis for your dedication to date and tell you that I have confidence in your ability to handle what promises to be a very exciting year. Part of being a good host is ensuring the city is safe. This means supporting and trusting our first responders. First responders, like the brave men and women of the Ottawa Police Service, Ottawa Fire Service, and Ottawa Paramedic Service, will be asked to do even more next year. Je veux rappeler à tous qu'Autawa est
I want to remind all of you that Ottawa is one of the safest cities to live in.
...our communities is changing, and we are working with our police services to address these challenges. We have seen an increase in violent crime and an increased readiness last year to use knives and guns to solve conflicts. Like many of you, I agree that any increase in crime is a flag for concern and renewed effort. I can assure you that we are ready for 2017. I am confident that our officers of the Ottawa Police Service under the leadership of Chief Charles Bordlow and Board Chair Eli El Shantiri are working hard to keep Ottawa safe. The Ottawa Police Service has committed to hiring an additional seventy-five officers over three years. But more officers is just one tool. We also need a strong bond, a bond of trust between residents and our men and women in uniform. J'aimerais partager avec vous et avec Kriel que j'ai
I'd like to read you a recent email I received from a resident.
Received from a resident recently, this is just one example of an Ottawa constable that went beyond the call of duty to serve residents. Quote, "My name is Heather, and last night I was waiting for the bus across from Tunney's pasture. Although I was bundled against the cold, I became hypothermic. I had been waiting for the bus for half an hour and was getting cramps in my legs because of the cold, and my feet felt like they were becoming frostbitten. I couldn't stop shaking. One of your officers watched me and realized I was in trouble. He parked his marked SUV and approached me and asked where I was going. When I told him, he said he would take me home. He loaded the walker I was using, because of some of my disabilities, into the SUV and drove me home. I would very much like to thank my hero for what he did. In all of the circumstances, I neglected to ask his name. Please, if you could supply his name, I would be truly grateful. He truly saved my life by going above and beyond the call of duty." It's unlikely that you would ever hear about Constable Ian Kemp in the news, or that he would receive an award for his actions, but I chose to highlight this example today as the type of action that our men and women in uniform take on a daily basis to build these bonds of trust. I'd ask that Constable Ian Kemp stand up and be recognized today. So I want to take this opportunity to point out and thank Constable Kemp specifically and all of his fellow officers for their everyday efforts and for reminding us through this one small example of the impact of their work on our city and its people. Nos paramedics sont aussi
Our paramedics are also there for our community.
Members of our Ottawa Paramedic Service provide our residents and visitors with the highest level of immediate care during their time of need. From first aid and CPR instruction to community paramedicine programs, paramedics are also active members of the community in which they serve. For example, paramedics Michelle Faragor, Jonathan Sylvester, Matthew Damonte, and Deanna Schofield volunteered their time to staff an ambulance so that a palliative care patient at CHIO could attend this year's Christmas parade in Orleans. For most, a ride in an ambulance usually means going to the doctor or the hospital, but this time was different for a child who instead got the chance to partake in the joy of the holiday season under medical supervision. This small but impactful gesture exemplifies compassion and goodness of the members of our paramedic service, and I'd ask that these four wonderful paramedics please stand and be recognized. Last year, council also made important investments to add more paramedics and emergency response vehicles. I'd also like to recognize the exemplary work of Ottawa Fire Services, whose members also consistently face danger on a daily basis. Recently, a resident was seriously injured while doing maintenance at their home in Corkery. In response, firefighters from Station 84 volunteered their time to demolish a deck so a wheelchair ramp could be installed. But these volunteers knew even more could be done, and the station proceeded to host a pancake breakfast, raising $2,000 for the family. Since then, the firefighters continue to visit the family from time to time. These actions supported the family during a difficult time and reflect the dedication of the fire service to our residents and to the generosity of our entire community. Today, we have Lieutenant Scott Morphy and Stephen Logan here representing Station 84, and I ask that they stand up to be recognized.
Our city is at its best when we stand together in times of need.
Standing together with our first responders, we are standing by each other to make our city even safer. An increase in visitors can sometimes lead to an increase in big-city challenges. Many of you have heard about an increase in the number of opioid overdose in Canada in various cities. I want to reassure you that for over two years, Ottawa Public Health has been leading the overdose task force, which includes our paramedic service, the coroner's office, pharmacies, police, and local hospital emergency rooms on overdose prevention in Ottawa. We've been monitoring developments across the country and have confidence that thanks to their public awareness efforts and leadership, the overdose task force, our health department along with its community partners are actively engaged to address the situation locally. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the Health Board Chair, councillor Cadre, and Dr. Israel Levy, the Chief Medical Officer of Health, for their dedication to this issue. The city is not only preparing for an increase in visitors in 2017, we're also preparing for a change in demographics. Our aging population will be a significant story in 2017, with the share of the population that is sixty-five and over expected to increase from about thirteen percent in 2011 to over twenty-one percent in 2036. This demographic shift is playing a key role in the city's commitment to intensification and to making our transit system and public infrastructure fully accessible. Again this year, we will be investing to create an age-friendly Ottawa through the city's Older Adult Plan. Ce plan comprend cinquante initiatives qui font que notre ville est
The Older Adult Plan includes fifty initiatives to make our city accessible to residents.
...navigate the built environment, city facilities and services, and finding creative solutions to help improve travel within Ottawa. Ottawa will also welcome over six thousand new permanent residents this year. Last year, Ottawa welcomed two thousand Syrian refugees, hundreds of immigrants from other countries, and hosted over eighty-five hundred international students, of which approximately three thousand new students arrive annually. I want to thank councillor Michael Kakisch, Special Liaison for Refugee Resettlement, for his important work with this community. And to the residents who stepped up to welcome newcomers from Syria through Refugee 613 and through other private initiatives including our wonderful faith-based communities, I want to thank you for representing Ottawa's spirit of generosity. Since last summer, I've been working with the Somali community on an action plan to help address local priorities. In 2017, for instance, we will celebrate multiculturalism in our city, just like how Greece, Lebanon, Vietnam, China, Italy, and many other countries celebrate their cultures with festivals. I hope to explore opportunities to celebrate the Somali culture by working with our community partners to develop a first-ever Somali cultural festival later in this term of council. It's with the same spirit of generosity that led to the tremendous success of our Ottawa for Fort McMurray fundraiser, in which over seven hundred and fifty residents and countless businesses took part in the event that raised over 128,000 dollars for the families of Fort McMurray. I want to thank Ottawa Senators alumni, Chris Phillips, for co-hosting the event with me. Chris, as you know, comes from Fort McMurray. J'espère qu'en travaillant ensemble, nous pourrons
I hope that together we can keep the momentum of generosity going.
...planning a number of events to help demonstrate how we are an inclusive and open city. Cette ville inclusive, ouverte et bilingue com-
That inclusive, open, and bilingual city includes our vibrant Francophone community. I'm proud to say that the services we offer our Francophone residents have steadily improved in the last few years. The most recent data indicates that twenty-six percent increase in the number of programs offered by our parks, recreation, and cultural services since 2010. The number of registrations to these programs is also up by more than eleven percent during the same period. I am also happy to report that the number of French language services complaints is going down, year after year. That number went from 119 in 2014 to 83 in 2015 for a reduction of thirty percent, and this trend downwards was sustained in 2016. This reduction in the number of complaints speaks to the city's commitment to improving the quality of services offered to our Francophone residents. In a few months, I will be hosting the 11th Annual Francophone Breakfast at City Hall, which will once again provide an opportunity for city and Francophone leaders to come together in a community and highlight the city's Francophone accomplishment.
Also a year to reflect and to build partnerships towards reconciliation. As many of you know, Ottawa is located on unceded territory of the Algonquin and Nishnabe Nation. I would like to honor the land and peoples of the Algonquin and Nishnabe Nation, whose ancestors have lived on this territory for millennia and whose culture and presence have nurtured and continue to nurture this land. I'd like to also take this opportunity to honor all First Nations, Inuit and Métis peoples, their elders and their ancestors, and their valuable past and present contributions to the land. I am mindful that for many of our indigenous friends and neighbors, the hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of Confederation takes on a different significance. Therefore, as we celebrate the founding of our nation, my hope is that we will continue to take steps towards reconciliation so that 2017 can be a year of healing, growth, and celebration for all our citizens. Towards that end, the city will be holding an Aboriginal Awareness Day in June. A particular passion of mine has been making City Hall a people place, and I'm happy to say that we've had some success on that front. When I see Ottawa residents and tourists enjoy the Seine's Rink of Dreams, visit the Barbara Ann Scott Gallery, or the Sports Hall of Fame, it reminds me of a very simple fact, that City Hall actually belongs to the people. Why is this important? Ensuring City Hall as a people place makes people feel included and involved, it makes them feel more closely connected with their city government. And making City Hall a people place is just a small example of our larger commitment to welcoming the world to Ottawa. As our 2017 celebrations unfold, Ottawa residents will be watching our vision of a world-class transit system come to life. La ligne de la Confederation et l'étape deux de train léger changera la façon de nos résidents
The Confederation Line and Stage Two LRT will change how residents move around the city.
...of over 155 million dollars in the new Public Transit Infrastructure Fund from the federal government. This investment is a significant boost to our city's transit and active transportation network, which are important areas of focus for residents, and I want to thank Minister Catherine McKenna for her involvement with this announcement. This funding includes over 65 million dollars towards preliminary engineering and other planning activities that have helped keep the city's Stage Two LRT project on schedule and help to ensure that we will have additional vehicles to manage ridership growth over the next several years. This past June, in councillor Monnet's ward, the province of Ontario announced an historical investment of 1.16 billion dollars towards stage-two expansion of LRT. This represents the largest provincial transit investment in our history. In February, council will be hearing more details on the stage-two project. I'm looking forward to discussing this issue with my colleagues and the public so we can move ahead with the procurement of the next phase of LRT. Ottawa will in fact be the only city in Canada where a new LRT line is being commissioned for revenue service at the same time as its extensions will go under construction. We're not merely shovel-ready, we are building now, and we are fully mobilized, and we have a clear plan to continue to advance our environmentally friendly and affordable transportation agenda. Once fully operational, the O-Train system comprised of the Confederation Line running east-west and the Trillium Line running north-south will span over fifty kilometers of rail and include thirty-nine stations. Ce nouveau système transportera, vent, cat, per-
It will accommodate up to 24,000 people per hour in each direction, more than twice the number of people than today.
...the city's O-Train system opens for revenue service in 2023, approximately seventy percent of the population will be within five kilometers of rail. While on the subject of our new LRT system, I'm pleased to announce that following the success of the school competition to name our road headers, we'll be having a competition in our local schools to name Ottawa's LRT engines on the new line. Information will be sent to councillors and your schools in the fall of this year, and winners will be announced in the spring of 2018. I look forward to seeing our creative young minds come up with some inspiring and exciting new names, and I've asked councillors Blay and Egli to coordinate this activity. Ottawa's LRT will also change our land-use planning to promote more density around LRT stations. I'm happy to say that our intensification strategy for residential developments is working very well. There were about 4,700 housing starts last year, and of those, a record fifty-eight percent of new housing in urban and suburban areas was developed through intensification. New housing built in intensification target areas such as Rapid Transit Stations, the Central Area, and Main Streets accounted for a record forty-one percent of these new units. The city is also committed to transit-oriented development. For example, in just the properties around Herdman, Lees, Tremblay, Saint Laurent, Seirville, and Blair stations alone, there is potential for more than 30,000 apartments and houses to be built, along with commercial and retail opportunities to provide these communities with better jobs. We know that this will take many years to unfold, but I think it's very exciting that our business community is prepared to invest in transit-oriented development. L'été dernier, nous avons approuvé des plans pour un edifice-
Just this summer, we approved plans for a residential high-rise next to Blair Station, the eastern hub of the O-Train Confederation Line.
...Rajis Real Estate Investment Trust has long-term plans for several major buildings at Blair Station that will capitalize on light rail success. New buildings are also being planned for the Preston Carling area next to the Trillium Line. These include the Sir John Carling Building, site of the new home for the Ottawa Civic Hospital campus. And Trinity Development is proposing a major development at 900 Albert Street with three mixed-use towers- with three mixed-use towers, all steps away from the Bayview LRT station. As the future development of La Bretton Flats will create a large new neighbourhood at the heart of our light rail system, this development includes a sixteen-hundred-unit, five-tower complex aimed at mixed housing, mixed-income households by Claridge, and also a grocery store to serve the downtown. In 2017, a number of new affordable and supportive housing developments will be officially open to coincide with the Sesquicentennial. These include four fifty-five Via Verona and Barhaven, a ninety-eight-unit affordable housing community for families, fifty-five to fifty-nine Carruthers Avenue, a thirty-six-unit supportive housing programme for individuals who experience chronic homelessness, and nineteen hundred Saint Joseph Boulevard in Orleans, a forty-eight-unit supportive housing programme for individuals who experience chronic homelessness. I want to thank councillor Mark Taylor, our special liaison on housing and homelessness, for his great work on these issues. Next month, we'll continue the dialogue on the proposed site for the new Central Library in councillor McKenna's ward.
Like many of you, I believe this is an extremely important city-building moment.
...and library chair Tim Tierney have been working hard to ensure that the new Central Library will be a resounding success. I'm of the view, like Lansdowne, our new Central Library will be a very important citywide people place, one that residents from Fitzroy Harbour, Stittsville, Vannier-Cumberland, Beacon Hill, Centertown, and Dalhousie will come to enjoy. The city will be challenged this year to guide the development of new suburbs and the gradual evolution of existing ones in a way that maintains their residential attributes. As existing suburbs mature, these areas have seen an increase in density and greater diversity of demographics. One initiative that will gain momentum in 2017 is the Building Better and Smarter Suburbs Initiative, led by councillors Harder and Hubley. This initiative is a practical example of how we can enhance our suburbs for future generations by making these communities more land-efficient, affordable, more livable, and more cost-effective to build and maintain. As many of you know, I created the Heritage Matters Task Force last fall, on which I served with the Chair of Planning Committee councillor Harder and Build Heritage Subcommittee Chair Toby Neuspom. This collaborative group, composed of heritage community leaders and staff from across the corporation, was formed to help ensure that future generations enjoy our rich architectural heritage and to reduce the instances of demolition by neglect. Today, I'm announcing the first major initiative that has come out of our work: the creation of a team to proactively ensure our vacant heritage buildings meet property and building standards and to support heritage conservation by working with property owners so they're aware of consulting resources and city programmes available to support heritage conservation. It's my hope that these efforts will prevent any further demolition by neglect. This team is already on the ground, visiting identified buildings to examine building conditions and categorise key heritage attributes. Following the initial inspections, formal actions will be pursued to ensure property standards, compliance, to better preserve heritage elements of existing properties. Ottawa also recognises the importance of maintaining natural landscapes for the protection of the environment, water protection, and adaptation to climate change. In 2017, we will complete the Urban Forest Management Plan that will provide a long-term vision for the urban forest and ensure that it's healthy and robust for the years to come. This year, the Energy Evolution Project will support catalyst projects to demonstrate Ottawa's collaboration with community partners in advancing energy conservation, energy efficiency, and renewable energy generation in Ottawa.
I'm looking forward to a report outlining these projects in the coming months, under the guidance of councillor David Chernychenko.
...will be planting a hundred and fifty maple trees in our Maple Groves Programme in each of the twenty-three wards to celebrate the anniversary of Confederation. Information will be released this week to identify the grove locations, and tree planting will commence in the spring of this year. There are so many reasons for optimism in 2017. The Conference Board of Canada, for instance, predicts that in 2017, Ottawa Gatineau will post better economic growth than Canada's for the first time since 2011. In 2016, the federal government and its agencies employed an average of one hundred and thirty thousand eight hundred individuals in the capital region; that's up from a hundred and twenty-seven thousand three hundred a year earlier. High-tech employment averaged sixty-eight thousand in 2016. This makes the capital region the most technology-intensive of Canada's major cities. Ottawa's tech sector has grown in part due to the breakout of such firms as Shopify, which makes electronic software for online merchants around the world. Shopify employed seventeen hundred and fifty at the end of September, more than one-third of them based in Ottawa. And just last month, in a major employee survey, Ottawa Shopify was ranked the best place to work in Canada.
And other tech firms expected, are expected to see gains locally in 2017.
...in applications for managing corporate supply chains and has experienced steady growth over the last year. Another solid member of Ottawa's tech cluster is Siena, an optical networking specialist that will put the finishing touches this year on a major new campus in Canada North with over sixteen hundred employees. Our city's lengthy history in telecommunications is helping to turn the innovation, turn the innovation industry spotlight towards Ottawa once again. The 5G technology innovation is largely thanks to advancements made by technological minds right here in the nation's capital. The 5G cellular networks are expected to allow for far better coverage, reliability, and speeds than are currently available. Ottawa is now home to Ericsson, Avaya, Nokia, Alcatel-Lucent, Huawei, and Siena, all key players in the upcoming 5G cellular revolution. Nokia and Ericsson, for instance, collectively employ more than three thousand people locally. And in September, Chinese cellular giant Huawei announced a five-hundred-million-dollar commitment over the next five years to bolster research and development of 5G cellular technologies in Canada. They already employ over five hundred people in their Canada offices, and we can expect to see this number grow as a result of these new investments. Ericsson, for instance, hired nine hundred former Nortel employees and is now in the process of setting up a forty-five-thousand-square-foot office building in Canada that will employ one thousand people locally. And just last week, a pair of promising Ottawa technology startups announced an influx of eighteen million dollars to expand staff and refine their products in Ottawa. Clearwater Clinical Limited announced a total of six million dollars to double its staffing over the next two years. The company's first commercial success was the Dizzy Fix, a device and application that helps patients to recover from vertigo. Also earlier this year, Ottawa's Clipfolio announced a new twelve-million-dollar investment to help expand businesses and to hire new staff. Clipfolio is an Ottawa company that makes software to allow companies to monitor sales, handle shipping and inventory issues, and manage their business information. And in BlackBerry QNX, who recently announced a one-hundred-million-dollar investment and six hundred and fifty new jobs in Ottawa, it's no wonder that Apple is responding and has set up an office in Ottawa to lead the charge on autonomous vehicles. The mix of technology being created in Ottawa, coupled with the proximity of major auto manufacturers in the Greater Toronto Area, is setting up Ottawa for a promising year in 2017. Last November, council unanimously approved a motion supporting the testing of autonomous vehicles on Ottawa's roads, starting in the Canada North Business Park. I want to thank councillor Marion Wilkinson for her pursuit of a centre of excellence for autonomous vehicles here in Ottawa. But there is more we can do to support this promising sector. That is why, in a few weeks, I'll lead a mission to Queen's Park to showcase the great work that is currently being done in Ottawa and explore how we can leverage our local high-tech sector to develop 5G in support of a sophisticated autonomous vehicle industry in Ontario. I'm pleased to announce that Sir Terry Matthews, who is a champion of technology in our city, will be co-chairing the delegation with me on this undertaking. We often find ourselves in the shadow of Toronto and Waterloo, who have Mars and Communitec as their innovation hubs. But our strength is highlighted in our new innovation centre, in the talent we are able to attract here, in the patents that we keep getting registered in Ottawa, and in the venture capital our local companies keep attracting, surpassing other Canadian cities on all of these fronts. Ottawa is where a growing share of strategic technological investments are being made and should be made, and we are going to promote that reality proudly. And this optimism is not limited to the technology centre. The Conference Board of Canada also predicts that the construction sector in Ottawa Gatineau will employ an average of forty-two thousand people this year, and next, about thirteen percent higher than in 2016. We also need to support small businesses through a new attitude towards this important economic engine. I want to thank councillor Alan Hubley for the work that he did on the Innovation Pilot Project that has borne fruit on a number of very exciting projects. Invest Ottawa recently moved to their new beautiful home in the Innovation Centre at Bayview Yards in councillor Leapers Ward at the intersection of the Trillium and Confederation Lines. The Innovation Centre will be our city's hub for creators, dreamers, inventors, and entrepreneurs, a place where great ideas will become even better businesses. We hope many small companies will emerge from the Innovation Centre's incubator and grow into larger employers in Canada, Orleans, and Barhaven.
We need to clear the path to help small businesses get it done.
...of opportunity, jobs not just in the central core, but also supporting small businesses in rural and suburban areas of Ottawa. 2017 will also see major advances in a number of large city-building developments like Zeeby and La Bretton Flats. These projects have the potential to become unique and dynamic places within the core of the city, creating a bridge between the downtowns of Ottawa and Gatineau and creating new river fronts that have not been accessible for generations. This year, the vision of the former Rockcliffe Air Base will also move ahead to create a complete mixed-use community in the east end that is walkable, cycling-supportive, and transit-oriented. The former Rockcliffe Air Base is one of the last remaining significant redevelopment sites in the inner-urban part of the city and will be the single largest development within the green belt since amalgamation. It will result in the construction of homes for approximately ten thousand residents and provide twenty-six hundred jobs. As you can see from all of these examples, Ottawa really is booming. Ottawa 2017 will be one of the single largest efforts our community has ever undertaken, and we need to align with community leaders and stakeholders to welcome Ottawa, welcome the world to Ottawa.
Now is our opportunity to change the way the world sees Ottawa.
Comes to visit or move to Ottawa will see an inclusive and optimistic city with an open attitude that sets us apart. I want to thank my council colleagues for their work to date, but I won't hide the hard truth from you. In 2017, I expect we will be asking even more of you. I believe that municipal governments that work together can be the incubator for creative solutions. To grow prosperity, equity, and sustainability in our city means we have to get transit right. That is why we introduced the new Equipass, which will allow a greater number of residents to participate more fully in our city's job market and socio-economic life. And that is why we are building Ottawa's LRT system. LRT is about putting people first; it's about committing to environmental sustainability; it's about creating the conditions for economic prosperity.
Many of the incredible services we deliver are made possible only by our hard-working and dedicated city employees.
Seventeen, our residents will continue to benefit from the strong partnerships we enjoy with our employee groups, a partnership that has led to a period of unprecedented labour peace and productivity in our city's recent history. I want to take this opportunity to thank you for your work over the last year and to convey to you my confidence in your commitment to making Ottawa a place for all in 2017. Some of you have heard me say this before, but it's never been truer: Ottawa is going from Ottawa the Old to Ottawa the Bold. Right from the kickoff celebrations that occurred on New Year's Eve, with the lighting of the cauldron at City Hall, to the many exceptional highlights that we have planned, highlights like Le Meschins, Sky Lounge, Red Bull Crashed Ice, Ignite One Fifty, the interprovincial Bridge Picnic, the 2017 Juno Awards, the Agra One Fifty, and the 2017 Grey Cup, it will be a year like we haven't seen before in our city's history. Before I conclude, I'd like to leave you with this video of the four hundred students from across Ottawa in all of your wards that formed a human chain of fire to kick off our celebrations here at City Hall. The fifteen centimetres of snow that fell on New Year's Eve could not stop the over five thousand residents and visitors from coming to City Hall and welcoming in 2017. with community groups, local businesses, and local organisations to ensure everyone is involved.
I want to thank the 2017 co-chairs Mathieu Fleury and Jean Cloutier for their tremendous efforts alongside Guy Leflamme and his entire team.
...to help build our community, and we can all be a part of it. Come, collaborate with us, and be part of this wonderful celebration of our country and of our city. Together, let's celebrate and continue moving our great city forward with optimism and confidence. Welcome to a year of celebration; welcome to 2017. Merci beaucoup. Thank you very much.
Merci. Conseiller Monnet, s'il vous plaît.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a motion moved by myself, seconded by councillor Taylor, that reads: be it resolved that the mayor's remarks given at city council meeting January twenty-fifth, two thousand and seventeen be appended to the minutes of today's council meeting.
Conseiller Monnet.
Pleasure.
Councillor Mydick.
Here.
Councillor Harder.
Here.
Councillor Wilkinson.
Present.
Councillor El Shantiri.
Present.
Councillor Cadri.
Present.
Councillor Taylor.
Here.
Councillor Shirelli.
Here.
Councillor Egley.
Here.
Councillor Deans.
Here.
Councillor Tierney.
Present.
Conseiller Fleury.
Councillor Neuspom.
Here.
Councillor McKenna.
Present.
Councillor Leaper.
Here.
Councillor Brockington.
Here.
Councillor Chernychenko.
Present.
Conseiller Cloutier.
Present.
Conseiller Blay.
Here.
Councillor DeRousse.
Here.
Councillor Moffat.
Here.
Councillor Kakish.
Present.
Councillor Hubley. Mayor Watson.
You see?
You have quorum. Adoption.
Carried. Declaration de conflits d'intérêts, Declaration of Conflicts of Interest. None. Communications as presented. Regrets. Councillor Fleury advises that we be absent from the city council meeting of January twenty-fifth, two thousand and seventeen. Motion to introduce reports. Monsieur important presentation de rapport. Conseiller Wilkinson and Monnet, s'il vous plaît.
That the report for the city councillor and solicitor office entitled Status Update: Council Inquiries and Motions for the Period Ending Twenty, January twentieth, two thousand and seventeen. Planning Committee Report Thirty Seven A, and the report for the city clerk and solicitor's office entitled Summary of Oral and Written Public Submissions for Items Subject to Bill Seventy Three Explanation Requirements at the city council meeting of December fourteenth, two thousand and sixteen be received and considered that pursuant to subsection thirty-five, subsection five of procedural bylaw two thousand and sixteen dash three seven seven, council receive and consider Planning Committee Report Thirty Eight.
Carried. Reports, postponement and deferrals, Planning Committee Report Number Thirty Seven, zoning bylaw amendment part of forty-eight hundred Bank Street. Leave, I don't have... Does anyone want to speak to this? On the report, carried? Carried. City clerk and solicitor, status update, council inquiries and motions for the period ending January twentieth, two thousand and seventeen, received. Planning Committee Report Number Thirty Eight, Comprehensive Zoning Bylaw, two thousand and eight dash two fifty, anomalies, Q one, two thousand and seventeen, carried. Bulk consent to... I don't have... Does anyone want to speak to this? On the report, carried? Carried. City clerk and solicitor, status update, council inquiries and motions for the period ending January twentieth, two thousand and seventeen, received. Planning Committee Report Number Thirty-Eight, Comprehensive Zoning Bylaw, two thousand and eight dash two fifty, anomalies, Q one, twenty seventeen, carried. Bulk Consent Agenda, does anyone wish to remove anything from the Bulk Consent Agenda at this time? On the Bulk Consent Agenda as presented, carried. Councillor Wilkinson, motion to adopt reports. Motion pourtant adoption de rapport, seconded by councillor Manette.
That the report for the city clerk and solicitor entitled Status Update, Council Inquiries and Motions for the Period Ending Twenty January, two thousand and seventeen, Planning Committee Reports Thirty-Six A and Thirty-Eight, and the report for the city clerk and solicitor's office entitled Summary of Oral and Written Public Submissions for Items Subject to Bill Seventy-Three Explanation Requirements at the City Council Meeting of December fourteenth, two thousand and sixteen be received and adopted as amended.
The motion, carried, adopté. Motions of which notice have been previously given. Motion dont avait été donné entièrement. Councillor Deans, seconded by councillor Wilkinson, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'll just read the motion first. Where a city council has adopted a Housing First policy that is designed to help increase the supply of affordable housing throughout Ottawa, and whereas the Housing First policy provides that, among other things, twenty-five percent of the proceeds from the sale of residentially-zoned land owned by the city where affordable housing is not developed be used to fund development elsewhere to meet social housing needs, and whereas there is a gap in the city's Housing First policy whereby a hundred percent of the proceeds from the sale of a property that will be used for residential purposes but that is zoned institutional are directed to the citywide reserve fund, which is not consistent with the policy's goals, and whereas such residential uses of land zoned institutional can include seniors and long-term care residents in group homes, and staff has advised that the Housing First policy is currently under review and including a provision for a portion of the sales of city properties for these uses would be consistent with the Housing First policy, and whereas addressing this gap in the Housing First policy will increase the contributions to the Housing Reserve Fund on an annual basis. Therefore, be it resolved that city direct housing services staff to conduct a review of all zones that could be included in their upcoming report to refresh the city's Housing First policy mainly to include a provision for a portion of the sales of city properties that are zoned institutional and will be used for residential purposes to be remitted to the Housing Reserve Fund for consideration by council, committee and council at that time, and that these additional funds be used for capital. Mr. Mayor, just ever so briefly, we all know that housing, affordable housing in our city is a high priority. This motion is designed to ensure that we get some extra capital dollars into our capital fund. As most of you will recall, in two thousand and fifteen, during the budget, we agreed to remove the four million dollar contribution to capital, was intended to be temporary, but it has not been put back, and so I'm looking for means to replenish that fund and get some very important capital dollars. I think this is one avenue, it shouldn't be the only avenue, but I think it's one avenue to achieve that goal, so I would just ask that you support that. And, Mr. Mayor, I'd also like to call for a recorded vote on this issue.
Great.
A recorded vote.
The list is not coming up on the screen. Councillor Wilkinson, your mic is on, I see. Do you want to speak to this? On the motion, carried? Oh, yays and nays? Okay, yays and nays?
Councillor Taylor.
Yes.
Councillor Moffett.
Yes.
Conseil Fleury. Councillor DeRousse. Councillor Deans.
Yes.
Councillor Hubley.
Yes.
Councillor Blay. Councillor Kakish.
Yes.
Councillor Leaper.
Yes.
Councillor McKenna. Councillor Brockington.
Yes.
Councillor Tierney.
Yes.
Councillor Wilkinson.
Yes.
Councillor Egli.
Yes.
Councillor Shirelli.
Yes.
Councillor Harder.
Yes.
Councillor Cadri.
Yes.
Councillor Midic.
Yes.
Councillor Elchantiri.
Yes.
Councillor Chernychenko.
Yes.
Councillor Neuspom. Councillor Manette. Conseil Cloutier.
Oui.
Mayor Watson.
Yes.
Twenty-one yays, no nays.
Thank you. Motions requiring suspension of the rules of procedure? Notice the motion for consideration at subsequent meetings? Motion to introduce bylaws? Councillor Wilkinson, please, seconded by councillor Manette.
The bylaws listed on the agenda under motions to introduce bylaws, three readings be read and passed.
Carried. Confirmation bylaw, règlement de ratification, conseil Wilkinson, appuyé par conseil Manette.
Will be read and passed to confirm the proceedings of the council meeting of January the twenty-fifth, two thousand and seventeen.
Inquiries, we have no written inquiries, Madam Deputy Clerk. Adjournment, councillor Wilkinson, please, seconded by councillor Manette.
That the proceedings of the city council meeting of January twenty-fifth, two thousand and seventeen be adjourned.
Adjourned. Thank you very much. Merci beaucoup, meeting adjourned.